Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, Downtown Illyria. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.loraincounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners page, then click on View Agenda.
Good morning, can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the January 18th meeting of the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners. For inspiration today, I'm going to read Proverbs 3: 27 through 32. Do not withhold good from those that deserve it when it's in your power to help them. If you can help your neighbor now, don't say, "Come back tomorrow and then I'll help you." Don't plot harm against your neighbor for those who live nearby trust you. Don't pick a fight without reason when no one has done you harm. Don't envy violent people or copy their ways, such people are detestable to the Lord, but he offers his friendship to the godly. And I also get to do the dog today, I'm a one-man show.
There you go.
Hi. Hello. Well, we have got a little, one-year-old Ridgeback boxer mix. She is available today, she's already been... Oh, hello. You want to say something? She's already been fixed, ready to go. So come down to our Lorraine County Dog Kennel, take her home, she'll take you for a walk for sure, maybe for a run. So if you don't want to take the opportunity to come to the Dog Kennel, you can check us out on Facebook. Thank you. It's the first time I ever got one got away from me. She's got lots of energy. Okay, Madam Clerk?
Under Resolutions Number 1, we do now have investments appropriations.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Transfers.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Travel.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Travel, or I'm sorry, bills.
So moved.
Second.
It's ringing in my eyes. Discussion, Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Authorized various personnel actions as indicated on the summary sheet for employees within jurisdiction of Lorraine County Commissioners.
Mr. Cortez.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I do have a number of personnel issues I'd like to discuss with the Board. Potential hires at Solid Waste 911. I have some union contracts for the United Steelworkers of America and the Corker Courts and Recorders. I'd also like to discuss the ongoing negotiations with the Department of Job and Family Services and the UAW and bring you up to speed on that. Also...
Purchasing and sale of real estate?
No, I don't think we're going to buy and sell anything. We're trying, we're trying real hard, but I don't have any updates on that. We do have pending legal matters that I need to discuss with you. All those topics are available on the Sunshine Act for Executive Session Discussions. So I ask it's the conclusion of our regular Board meeting today, we go into Executive Session and we talk about those items. Thank you.
Thank you. Approve and waive the reading on the minutes of January 9th.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Point Jonathan Reichel is Lorraine County's AP or Inspector for the year 2017, total annual appropriations is 3,400, with mileage reimbursement of 52 cents per mile.
Is that the rate, 52? Okay. So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Receive and journalize a regular annexation petition of 34.0703 acres on parcel 11-0009200... That should be another 0070, and 1.8323 acres on parcel 11-000920008 of land in In-Town Township to City of Illyria, State Route 57, Chestnut Ridge LLC. Big Cone Managing Member is the petitioner and agent is Attorney Kenneth J. Fisher and Dennis Navarre. And we'll have the public hearing, which is on the 69th day on March 21st at 9:30 a.m.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Under Job and Family Authorized Purchase Service Agreement with Murray Ridge Production Center Illyria in the amount of 6,700, effective February 1st, 2017 through January 31st, 2018, for cleaning services of the JFS Building for fiscal year '17, and authorized director to execute on behalf of Board of Prosecutors, proposed to form.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Approve a blanket resolution authorizing payment of mileage, parking, and tolls when emergency travels required outside of the county, in the amount of 500, effective March 1st, 2017 through February 28, 2019.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Under Solid Waste, extend the contract with ERG Environmental Services Bowling Green for the fluorescent lamp collection and recycling services for fiscal year '17 to be paid from the fluorescent recycling account.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Approve a district market development grant in the amount of $549.89 for the Graffin Midview Public Library for the recycled plastic table and rubber mulch to be used in the community reading garden.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Under Common Pleas, authorize Lorraine County's Court of Common Pleas, General Division, Judges, and Staff utilize Lorraine County's Laura Mett issued Visa Credit Card now to exceed 7,500 per court, and Administrator's Office is notable, well, is noted in the resolution as of the effective date approved until such time is revoked by the financial institution and/or modified by authority granting the approval.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
That was tough to spit out, huh?
I know. Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Under Domestic Relations, authorize Lorraine County's Domestic Relations Court, Juvenile Branch, Judges, and Staff utilize County's Laura Mett issued Visa Credit Card now to exceed 5,000 per court, and 1,000 for the Administration Offices is noted in the resolution as of the effective date approved until such time is revoked by financial institution and/or modified by authority granting approval.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Under the Engineer, approve and enter in contract with Tran Systems to complete the CEAO fiscal year '17 safety studies for the intersection of New London Eastern and Holly Road and New London Eastern West Road Huntington Township, and Rusha Road West Ridge Carlisle Township in the amount of 36,000, which 32,400 will be reimbursed through ODOT on behalf of the Federal Highway Administration.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Authorize engineer to execute Contract Modification 1 and 2 with Bromhelm Engineering and Surveying to assist the county with the Army Corps of Engineers coordination and permits for Baumhart Road and Middle Ridge Road Intersection Project in the amount of 9,600 to be paid from the engineer project account.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Approve and enter in construction agreement with Michael Bruckecker International Cleveland in the amount of $146,977 to provide coordination and construction, administration, inspection services for LOR CR 42-4.12 Burzley Road Bridge Replacement Project Huntington Township. Ninety-five percent will be funded by Federal Highway Administration through CEAO, remaining 5% will be paid from project bridge account.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Advertise bids for Overland Rubber Resurfacing Project Amherst, noticed in the Chronicle on January 20th and 27th, and open at 2:00 p.m. in February 14th.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Advertise bids for Baumhart Rubber Resurfacing, Bromhelm, and Henrietta, noticed in the Chronicle on January 20th and 27th, and open at 2:30 in February 14th.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Advertise bids for Murray Ridge Road Garrail Project Illyria Township, noticed in the Chronicle on January 29th and 27th, and open at 3:00 p.m. in February 14th.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Cortez.
I have no further additional comments or reports this morning, thank you.
Mr. Ennis.
I have one matter of pending litigation to discuss in Executive Session.
Commissioners report.
I don't have a lot to report. On last Monday, after our organizational meeting, we held our first Transportation Improvement District meeting for the year. Senator Gail Manning attended, which was nice of her to take out time to be there for that. Thursday, I attended my stepping up initiative meeting. There's a big push to get law enforcement with their CIT training, Critical Intervention Team training. That's for both mental illness and addiction issues, to try to get these people before they're in the system, whether it be mostly to keep them out of jail. Because once they get in the system, it's, they seem to be in there a lot longer than the average person. And yesterday, we had our first Stormwater Meeting District, so looking forward to doing a lot of projects. I see the engineers got a lot of busy work ahead, so, into my report.
On top of all of those things, we had, on Sunday, I attended Martin Luther King Day Walk in the City of Lorraine from City Hall to Greater Victory Baptist Church, nice turnout, about 50 people, probably some of the best weather we've seen in years for the walk. And then again on Monday also, so nice turnout again to the Illyria High School from Illyria City Hall. But again, nice turnout, nice weather, and attended everything else. At home for the new president, CCAO asked me to serve on the Board again this year, so I will be down there on Friday, seeing what's coming up from a legislative standpoint in Columbus.
Thank you for doing that.
With the recession, yeah, with the recession coming before us, so the Governor. Into my report.
Had the opportunity to attend the Lorraine NAACP Martin Luther King Event that was held at Worship Cathedral. That was at 3 o'clock on Sunday, Reverend Stanley Miller was the main speaker. It was, yeah, very well-attended, very nice event there. Also had the opportunity to participate in the MLK March from Illyria City Hall over to the high school, and there is no question, no doubt, that this was one of the warmest MLK days we've had in a long time. I mean, I remember last year, even though it was a mild winter, just couldn't wait to get to the front door of the high school. I literally thought my face was going to fall off, it was so cold. The event is put together by Dr. Latonya Conley at, for the City of Illyria, over at Illyria High School, was a very well-attended, packed auditorium over there for that. Young lady by the name of Maya Shed, very impressive young lady, she's graduating from Midview High School. I think some of the papers had a story on her, and I think she's been, she was accepted like the top five or six Ivy League schools have all said, "We'd love to have you." And my understanding is she also received a recent scholarship award, I think for about 35,000 or 36,000. I don't even know if that's going to cover the whole thing, I think she was going off to Harvard. But she did a dramatic presentation and also a dance. And then following that, as I normally do, I went over for the soul food dinner that was held in Illyria. But for the first time, I tried chitlins, and the gentleman who served me the chitlin said, "You know what this is?" I said, "I don't think I want to know, I think I just want to try it first."
What is it?
I won't be having chitlins anytime soon, so, I think it's from the intestines.
It's the innards.
Yeah, the innards. And I couldn't figure out why everybody was dousing it with hot sauce. I figured that out after I had my first sample, but nonetheless, that soul food dinner is always amazing, that was just the first time I had the chitlins there, but I think I had my sample for life, but it was quite a nice event. Also Main Street Illyria had their meeting yesterday, had a chance to attend their Board meeting, and they've got a lot of good things coming up. They also want to help out with the fountain project that the City of Illyria is putting together. And as they normally do, they put together their steak fries, so they can have the Pops Concert downtown. It's going to be a little challenging this year, obviously with our renovation going on with the courthouse, they'll be moving things over to the main stage, but at the same time, the City of Illyria is preparing for a new fountain to come in, so there's some logistics everybody's going to be working through, but it's my understanding it's supposed to have the fountain done before the Apple Festival and those kinds of events, but, and also just want to thank our outgoing President Barack Obama for his service to our country. My wife actually, over the weekend, sat down and wrote a letter to the President, telling him about the first time that she met him, and how when she met him, he was still a senator at the time with his family, and she remembered calling all of her family members, and she said, you know, especially on her mother's side, it's a very large family, and telling them, "I think I met the first African-American President of the United States, and we'll be hearing from him soon," and of course, he went on to do just that, but just want to thank him for his service to our country. I know that he had many challenges along the way, and you know, the thing about public service, when you do leave and you feel like you've left the world in a better place, you know you've done the right thing, and I think we can certainly say that about this President.
Okay, what is that? Actually, Tuesday, January 24th at 11, we'll have our investment advisory, and then on Wednesday, next Wednesday morning at 9:15, we're going to have a Stormwater, quick Stormwater meeting again. For correspondence.
Will the reading be waived?
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Public comment.
You're up.
Okay, thank you very much, my name is Rudy Breckley, I live at 225 West Wind Drive, Avon Lake, and can we have the first slide?
Here we go, we're working it.
Okay.
Hold on one sec.
Thank you very much. Well, we all got a wake-up call in November of last year, when the Chattanooga school bus overturned, and six children were killed, and more than 20 were injured. The, none of these children had seatbelt protection, although the driver was unharmed, and he was the one that did have a seatbelt. The seatbelts I'm speaking about are the three-point lap shoulder belts that you're all familiar with, and that are in every passenger car. The take-home message that I have for you today is that seatbelts save lives. My two goals that I'm trying for are, number one, to alert the community to this seatbelt, to the school bus safety concern that can be fixed with seatbelts, and my number two goal is to help the school district deal with this issue and overcome this problem. The federal government does not require seatbelts in school buses because of a 1970's theory that uses padded seatbelts instead of seatbelts, to absorb the impacts of children's bodies following a short stop or crash to minimize their injuries. This theory is crude and violent means of protection. You have complete theory failure when you have rollovers or side crashes. A 2015 new federal government policy recommended three-point seats be available for every child in every school bus. Current seatbelt, I'm sorry, current bus safety features are inadequate because, on average, six students die every year, and more than 7,000 are injured. Six states and more than 200 school districts require seatbelts in school buses, and many safety and medical organizations recommend seatbelts in school buses. Well, what are the objections? The primary one is cost. It turns out that for new school buses, approximately $5, it costs extra $5 per student per year. However, I do think there would be cost reductions because of insurance reductions and litigation cost reductions. School buses have an excellent safety record, if you look at the number of students that are transported and the miles that are undertaken. However, still, six students will die and more than 7,000 are injured. Some people consider there'll be a delay in escaping from a bus in certain situations. Well, the seatbelts are quick release, they're the seatbelts that all children are familiar with. My grandchildren are uncomfortable unless they have their seatbelts on, but they're quick release, and there's no escape for a child who's injured or unconscious. Local travel, our school buses go to, on the highways for school-sponsored events. So my conclusion is still, seatbelts save lives, the installation of seatbelts represents a substantial, recognized, and critical improvement to school bus safety. Now, I do have a tape, it will just take a minute. Now you'll see what happens when you have a seatbelt versus without seatbelts. This is a simulation with test dummies, you can see the test simulation. These children don't have seatbelts, and as the bus overturns, rolls over, you can see the kind of thing that happens to these kids. They fly about the cabin, will, and you can see what the seatbelts do. They hold a child in place, you, as a secondary benefit, you can see the kind of head and neck injuries these kids would get. This is exactly what happened in a Chattanooga bus rollover. These, that's just from another angle. Now, what I'd like to do is answer any questions that you might have. I know I've gone through things very quickly, I was thinking of coming back and maybe giving you a more relaxed presentation with more information. I know you have the summary that I prepared, but if you do have any questions, I can take them right now.
Yeah, I was just going to state that when I was down in Columbus, I know this issue came up several times, it seemed like it didn't go anywhere. Unfortunately, I think what it always comes down to is the cost involved. I know when I was, I used to work in Chattanooga and live in Chattanooga, I still have some Facebook friends in Chattanooga, and I know when the incident happened, seeing some of the stories about that. Can we click over to the meeting? Sure. But I think they were giving estimates, even in the state of Tennessee, somewhere around 9,000, 10,000 buses, they were estimating, they thought it would be about $7,500, I think, to outfit, you know, each one with the seatbelts, and, you know, you get into tens of millions of dollars on a lot of these things, and...
Well, when you consider a school bus costs about $100,000, and it does last 10 or 15 years, the calculation that I've seen is it's, you know, $5 per student per year. That's how it breaks down to. Now, you know, I'm sure we're all on the same page here, we want the safest transportation that's possible for our children.
Seems like a small price to pay.
Yes, and everyone I've talked to is surprised that, you know, school buses don't have seatbelts, you know, that we have in every passenger car.
Great. Again, it's something to the state legislature, sir, you're going to have to work on, it's going to have to be passed up there. I don't think a local can do that.
Well, what I found out about is, every, the Governor has to present a highway safety plan to the federal agency, it's the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration every year. And what I've been told by representatives of that federal organization is that there is money available for grants for programs that would involve a school bus installation of safety belts. So that, you're absolutely right, on a state level, this is probably where this is going to go, and I would think we, you know, in Lorraine County, we could have a model program, you know, select certain school districts and see how the program would work in those school districts, and then gradually increase the funding to the whole county.
I thought it was interesting that the government, you said recently, the federal government in 2015 recommended, not required, recommended, you know, the seatbelts, that's the key part of it.
Right, it was the same national organization that, you know, forces us to use seatbelts in every passenger car. This organization makes a recommendation, and they didn't want, make it a mandate because they were, for economic considerations, they felt that some school districts wouldn't be able to do this, and so they held back, and they left it for the states to resolve this problem. And each state would have to decide whether the seatbelts were going to go into their school buses. There are six states that have requirements for seatbelts in school buses, and they're listed in my handout. You know, and they, those states bit the bullet and went ahead and made it a mandate, and it is cheaper to have the seatbelts installed in the new school buses. So I know our school district buys two buses every year, so we would, you know, and that would amount to probably about $16,000. So it would take longer, but it would be a way of starting things in the right direction.
Seems like, you know, you can't buy a car without seatbelts in it, it should be, you can't buy a bus without seatbelts in it. It should start with that, not really with the school district, but with the manufacturer of school buses.
Yeah, there is a, the legislators in Chattanooga, that represent Chattanooga, have introduced federal legislation to mandate seatbelts in school buses, and that would actually bring down the cost for everyone.
Right.
You know, because once everyone has to have these, these seatbelts, then, you know, just based on volume, the cost would drop.
Right.
But you're absolutely right about that, it should be mandated for these school buses to have seatbelts.
And I know the school districts also had a concern, not only about the cost, but then the legal exposure from the standpoint of, if they install the seatbelts, since it didn't come from the manufacturer that way, you know, something goes wrong with the seatbelts and they're defective, and it comes from the manufacturer, then the manufacturer faces the legal exposure. If you have to do it locally, by installing the seatbelts, then...
Well, and I'm visiting a seatbelt manufacturer next Monday, but what I've been told by these seatbelt manufacturers is that they deal with the bus manufacturer, and their seatbelts are installed there.
At the factory.
But, see, I would think a little bit differently, that the litigation would be, litigation cost would be high if you don't install these seatbelts, because you have a federal recommendation to install seatbelts, and if you don't do it, I would think a plaintiff's attorney, and I'm not an attorney myself, a plaintiff's attorney would say, "Well, you know, you didn't follow the federal recommendation, and you're negligent." Did I say that? No, I can't say that. I take that back.
I think one of the issues also, though, is who's going to make sure the kids keep the seatbelts on?
Yeah, I thought about that, too. What if they don't click it?
There's a certain amount of training and education that has to take place, but as I said during the talk, my four-year-old and seven-year-old are uncomfortable if they get into the car and they don't have their seatbelt buckled when the car moves. And I'm sure, you know, if we took a poll in this room, that same thing would take place. But there are some improvements in the bus that could overcome that problem. You know, now, if we don't buckle our seatbelts, the car squawks at you in some way. Well, we could have that same thing for the seatbelts for the kids. That would add to cost, but as, you know, I think it's a matter of training, and, you know, the only way the 1970's theory that I spoke about works is if the kids are seated upright, looking forward, and both feet on the ground. Well, how often do kids... Well, how often do kids do that? So the, I think the theory, it was in 1970's, it was a compromise, it came about, but I think we're beyond that now.
Yeah, I rode a bus, was it Troy Junior High, in ninth grade, and, you know, ninth grader, right? I can tell you, it was a pretty crazy ride. The bus was entertaining. The bus ride was entertaining.
The, the idea is, once you have these seatbelts installed, it's not only a safety matter, it's a matter of behavior. If the kid isn't in the seatbelt and he can't move around, like you were talking about, it, it eliminates that particular problem, plus you don't have driver distraction, and that's one of the biggest things. You know, in, in talking with the transportation people in Avon Lake, that's one of the things that the drivers would really want, is to have the kids set and, and not running around and not causing trouble and not bullying other children, which takes place during the school ride. So, you know, that, I'm sure the drivers would vote for having the kids in seatbelts.
Yeah, the county school superintendents also meet once a month, and that's probably a good meeting for you to attend as well, too. They normally meet either at JVS or the Education Services Center and Superintendent Ring, and that would be a good one.
I'd like some help with that.
Yeah, sure.
The, I've talked to Senator Manning, and she is sympathetic, and, you know, I think that, that meeting you're talking about, she mentioned that as well, as, you know, I, I think it's a big bite to take off, and these school districts are, you know, they're trying for funding for educational things for the kids, and, and yet, you know, this is something that's, it's pretty important. It's a high priority item, and, and these injuries and deaths that you have with these children, it's all preventable. You know, as I said in the talk, the, the driver of the school bus, and you saw the school bus on TV, you know, it was practically cut in two, he's, he was on high. He had a seatbelt on.
Yep, yep, yeah.
Well, thank you for your passion in coming in and, and bringing this to our attention, and hopefully the media will pick up on it and take off.
Okay, well, thank you very much. The, you know, when I saw what happened to those poor kids in Chattanooga, I, I knew that something had to be done. You know, we've been debating this issue for 40 years. I know I've, I've been paying attention to it just about my whole career, but, you know, I, I decided now, I, I've gotta do something about it, so.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for having me and listening to me.
Thank you.
Yeah, and we'll follow up with you through Tony, it's ordered a scheduled time for us to talk a little more, and maybe I can just walk you through what goes on in the legislature and, you know, trying to have that meeting with superintendents.
I, I need help.
Okay.
Hey, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else wishing to address the board this morning? Seeing none, I move that we go into executive session as outlined by the administrator and District County Prosecutor.
Second.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
This has been a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioner's General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor downtown Aleria. These are public meetings, and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioner's page, then click on View Agenda for a printable